Go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. We'll start off with the invocation room. Debbie Boss from Barrow Community Church.
Father, I thank you so much for this opportunity to bring the city of Rensselaer before you with all these that care so much about it. I ask, Lord, that you would bring your grace and your blessing to the city of Rensselaer, and, Lord, that you would bless all those that work so hard to make this a good place to work and to live. Father, I ask that you would help this council, that you would give them wisdom as they make decisions, that you'd give them the ability to work together in harmony, in personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. And, Father, I pray for the agenda set before them today. Let your will be done here in Rensselaer. Let your love and light pierce through any darkness and bring us peace in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Debbie. No. We'll start with a roll call.
Mayor Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Shelby Keys. Here. Council Members Russ Overton.
Here.
Kevin Armond.
Here.
Noel Weiser.
Here.
Jeff Rayburn. And Ernest Watson, Jr.
Here.
City Attorney Todd Sammons. Absent. Building Commissioner Jacob Hall.
Here.
Cemetery Caretaker Joe Eppinger. Absent. Fire Chief Kenny Hahn.
Here.
Police Chief Matt Anderson.
Here.
Utility Office Manager Heather Smart.
Here.
Manager of Electric Operations Heath Malone.
Here.
Park Superintendent Heather Hall.
Here.
Street Water Sewer Sanitation Superintendent Bryce Black.
Here.
Gas Superintendent Todd Wilson.
Here.
And Assistant Superintendent Josh Eldridge.
Here.
All right, council, you reported the minutes of the last meeting. How would you like to act on those? Been a motion second to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, council, how would you like to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. You want to oppose? Which carries? Next is our citizens' comments. If there's anybody in the crowd that wants to address the city council, now would be the time to do so. Hearing none, we'll start off with a childcare presentation from Brienne Hooker. Brienne, who is yours?
Mayor Phillips and city council members, I thank you for allowing me some time on the agenda to address you this evening. I want to start out by saying thank you for your diligent support of the mayor and his goals to honor and execute the most recent city strategic plan that brought community members together to share what's important with them. Those are your constituents. When people feel heard, they feel they're a part of something bigger than themselves. And when people are allowed to get involved, it builds pride in our community. I'm primarily here tonight to thank you, this whole chat tonight is a thank you, for your continued support for high-quality early childhood education and care for our youngest citizens through your contribution to Appleseed. JNF has been working on childcare and pre-K education since 2017. I also want to provide some context tonight for the need of your support. We could discuss brain science behind early care and education, the reduction of long-term diseases, better financial outcomes, lowered school support costs, lowered incarceration rates, how many sinks you need in a room for 30 kids, and what glue tastes better for crafts. Are you supposed to laugh? Because that means you're paying attention? Okay. I could talk about this topic for the next two hours, but I feel like I might get fired in five minutes, and I'm not going to do that. You're welcome. I have lost enough hair and stomach lining to earn that time, but if you want to talk about this more, I'm happy to offer that after this meeting. Not tonight, I'm going home to eat the food I just made, but at some point, I would love to meet with you. Right now, we're in the middle of the perfect storm. Five years ago, childcare investment seemed to matter to the state of Indiana, and capacity was built for more seats and access over that period of time. Families were experiencing the support they needed, and we were building momentum in this space to start building coalitions, statewide coalitions, in fact, and networks to find a better solution for all future families. Now things have taken a turn. There are currently 467,000 children under the age of six in the state of Indiana. 326,000 of those have been identified by Early Learning Indiana that they might need childcare. Total seats available for that 326,000 is 203,197. Of those 200,000 seats, only 107,000 are high-quality education-focused. The reason I share that is to also, to share the deficit of care, but also to share that our community of Jasper County has a great gift. In the best interest of our children and all of the licensed seats available in Jasper County and Newton County are high-quality seats. We have one of the best care options available in the state of Indiana, which is attractive to working families. People move for good schools and excellent education-focused childcare. Back to the perfect storm. The Brown administration just cut the number of vouchers available through the new 2026-27 budget from 140,000 to 70,000. So kids that become five years of age and age out to kindergarten, they will not be replacing 50% of those vouchers. There are already 30,000 children on the waitlist right now for voucher assistance. This particular assistance is for families who qualify because of their income level, and in some cases, it covers their entire cost of care. But no family pays full price at Apple Tree. So is the case with all of the Right Step Centers in Goodland, Remington, the Tippecook County area, and basically all other nonprofit childcare centers. There's a sliding fee scale that reflects weekly gross income, and the family pays a copay. Philanthropy pays for the rest. And for the families that don't qualify for full voucher assistance, that's most of the working families. So 2/3 of the Apple Tree families do not qualify for assistance. They are on that sliding scale, and your contribution helps pay for those kiddos every week. The state just reduced the voucher reimbursement rate across the state effective October 5th, reducing the amounts between 25% and almost 47% for Jasper County. Depending on the quality level, the age of the children, the cost of care, and where they are, there's like eight different moving factors. So now there'd be a need for more philanthropic dollars to cover the cost of care for every family at the center. Appleseed's trying to figure that out, how they can afford to help families who will never come off the waitlist for assistance because there will be no assistance for them. Covering that care so those moms and dads can go to work because their everyday life requires two or more incomes, and often more than one job per parent. If you haven't caught on, the federal government's pushing decisions on many big things back to states, and Indiana's also pushing things back down the food chain. So counties, cities, towns, and townships will be the entities to deal with community needs and challenges, including figuring out how to pay for the things we've seen affected by state and federal funding cuts. You know as well as I do that rural communities will be hurt by this most deeply. We have a very generous community here, you all know that. But there are only so many humans and only so much money. So if I can boil this down to one, it's a very complex issue, it's a lot of math. Zion can tell you that I had my colored markers and paper out the other night trying to figure out how to quantify this for you in a helpful way. What you're being handed now is a sheet that shows where the families who attend Apple Tree, where they're working, top sheet, and then there's some information from Early Learning Indiana and a snapshot of the dashboard of Jasper County. You can visit their website, there's a lot of great information there. Small businesses and larger businesses like these on the sheet in front of you keep our community working. Without them, the spiral of people leaving would be devastating to our schools, our workforce, our population, and our government's ability to take care of people here in our community in ways that we've all agreed that communities work. So to simplify the numbers for you, your contribution last year of $100,000 to Appleseed covered the deficit of the cost and care for families in Rensselaer through part of August this year, so almost eight months. Now Appleseed will be digging, that money's gone. Now Appleseed will be digging into their reserves to cover the rest of the year's deficits and to figure out how to pay for more families who no longer have access to voucher assistance because of those cuts. So for the 10% of the 1/3, the 10 families, they'll be figuring out how to pay the full cost of care, which is between $164 and $389 a week. And for the 2/3 of the families that are on the sliding pay scale, that's additional $85 to $160 a week per kid, per week. So back of the napkin math, this is my real fast facts. I think Appleseed is going to see a deficit of over $75,000 between now and the end of the year. That's not a, this is not a four-month problem either. This is a 2026-2027 problem. I get paid to do my job and to show up to meetings like this, to think about what my donors might need to know. The volunteers like Zion Miller, Lee Pedenger, who are on the board of Appleseed who are here, they've given their time, and they don't get paid to lose their hair or stomach lining as they continue to figure out how to keep the center going for working parents in Rensselaer. Parents who want a safe place full of nurturing and educational opportunities to lead their child each day. Many of you know where my husband and I live, the busiest intersection of the town for several months of the year in schools and session. Every morning and every afternoon, I watch a Castonius truck drive by my house to drop a kid or pick a kid off off at Appleseed. The need for this center is real. Please know that JNF and Appleseed will continue to do everything we can to support these efforts everywhere in both counties. Your support, your continued support, especially right now, is critical. Rural communities don't have many buckets of money, and we have to be strategic, and we have to think about our community like an ecosystem. So back to this perfect storm. Without care, families can't go to work. I know Good Samaritan Food Pantry's been here recently to share with you the level of need they're experiencing. We are going to see primary needs spiral out of control. Families can't bring in enough money to pay their rent or mortgage, which are business owners in our community, let alone groceries, which are business owners in our community. The one parent who gets fired for not showing up, that loss of income affects everyone in that household and the local business that just lost revenue from lack of productivity, and that affects everyone who works there and the city as a whole. So you are economically supporting the 44 businesses on that sheet of paper with your continued support. So as I wrap this up, just think about this, cities often use tax abatements and other economic incentives to attract businesses to the community, but what do you do to keep them here? Investing in high-quality education-focused care is an investment in getting your workers to work and keeping your businesses in business. It's just as critical as the roads they drive on and the water and electricity they need to keep the doors open. So tonight, if you hear anything, JNF appreciates your partnership and support. I know Appleseed appreciates your economic investment and your partnership and support for working families and businesses. The more we can do this together and talk about this together, the stronger we can be. That's all I have. If you have questions, I'm here, but I would rather buy you a cup of coffee, talk about you later.
Well, I certainly appreciate the effort that you put into this. I know we've asked over a long period of time, what businesses, what industry, what, you know, who are using Apple Tree? And then I think the one time I'm down there, I could see our police officers dropping off their children. So when you start looking at it from that point of view, it directly affects us all. So it's been a good partnership. The council's done a fantastic job of putting stuff in the budget to keep this project moving forward and have this infrastructure available to not just people who live in Rensselaer, but those who come to work here also.
Thank you.
Thank you for your partnership, and we look forward to the future collaboration.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, I'm going to turn over to Chief Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. You three guys want to step up here real quick, sheriff yourself included? You made me talk today at training, so you're going to have to come up here and form the crowd as well. So just some background, I can't recall the date of October 7th. We had a call for a fire on the west side of town. Officer White and Officer Fozzie showed up, and they were able to remove the victim from the house. And what the thing I'm going to read doesn't cover is that it wasn't just go in, get the victim out of the living room. It was forcing the door open, was it steel or just heavy wood? Heavy wood. It took Dan, I would say probably anywhere to eight to 10 tries to get the door forced open. But not only go in and remove her, they had to go in, try to find her, come back out to get fresh air, and this was multiple trips in the apartment before they were able to find her in the back bedroom. So before I get into that, I want to thank the sheriff for the great relationship that we have, the city and the county. I was hoping Todd would be here. This goes back to when I got hired when Todd was the chief, continued on when Mayor Phillips was the chief, and I'm glad that this relationship has continued over the years. There's so many examples of this behind the scenes with investigations that people don't see, the help that we get. If we've had a big case, county has come out without question to assist us. So this is just a public example of that relationship that we have with them. And I'll just read the letter that I'm going to give to both Dan and Brett tonight. On October 7th, first responders were dispatched to a reported structure fire in the city of Rensselaer. Before the arrival of the Rensselaer Fire Department, Sergeant Dan White of the Rensselaer Police Department and Deputy Brett Fozzie of the Jasper County Sheriff's Office responded to the scene. Upon arrival, they observed visible smoke and flames coming from the residence. Sergeant White and Deputy Fozzie quickly learned that an individual was inside the burning home. Without hesitation and without the benefit of protective gear or firefighting equipment, they forced entry into the structure. Navigating through the smoke-filled conditions, they located a victim in the back bedroom and successfully removed the individual from the residence. Once outside, first responders immediately began administering additional lifesaving measures. Sergeant White's and Deputy Fozzie's decisive actions, composure under extreme pressure, and unwavering commitment to protecting life exemplify extraordinary bravery. Their selfless response under hazardous and life-threatening conditions is a testament to their courage, professionalism, and dedication to duty. I'm going to give that to Brett, and one to Dan, and I see Brett's got his lifesaving pin on as well. This will be a pin that Dan can wear on his uniform, so I'd like to thank both of you for your duty and your commitment to the city. Sheriff, do you want to say anything?
I don't have a lot to say, I wasn't expecting it, but anyway, I just want to reiterate, we worked very well with all the departments in our county, especially Rensselaer, and very happy to have that relationship. You know, it's not just one side, they come out and help us and are always there when we need assistance as the calls pile up and we don't have the manpower. So very, very happy for the city to kind of reciprocate all of this help that we both get in those departments.
And then I'll turn it over to Steve Jones of the State Fire Marshal's Office as well.
I don't get to do this much as a state fire marshal as to give the coppers an award, but it hurts, no. No, I very much appreciate from my office, the state fire marshal's office started in 1913. We're the oldest public safety agency in the state of Indiana, and part of my job is to recognize the good things that happen within our state. It doesn't matter if it's a police officer or a firefighter. Tomorrow is First Responder Day, Appreciation Day. Every day in the state of Indiana, there's 8,000 runs that happen in the state every day. 3,500 of them are police officers. We have sirens going 24 hours a day, seven days a week in the state of Indiana. There's not a time the siren is silent in the state of Indiana. People work hard, and whenever you pull up, most of our stuff's pretty routine, but every once in a while, we pull up and it's the pucker factor, we got somebody trapped. And very much appreciate what you've done. And I want to, from myself, I want to give you guys the state fire marshal's heroic lifesaving award, Brent Fozzie of Jasper County Sheriff's Department, and Mike White, Dan White from the police department here. But it says that the state fire marshal's heroic lifesaving award recognizes the attempt to save a life effectively in execution and performance. In honor of Officer Brett Fozzie and Officer White for their heroism, extraordinary skill, and resourcefulness in rescuing a woman trapped inside of a burning apartment building before fire crews arrived, thank you for your service. And I very much appreciate you giving people a second chance at life, you know, and it's just not them, it's their families and everything. Like I said, 8,000 runs in the state of Indiana, 3,500 of them, and apparently you took one from the fire department here, but you guys work hard every day, and you don't get recognized typically from my level at the state. And it's local government is where it happens at, everybody here. As we were doing roll call, street department, all that stuff, you guys play, I love the water department, I think it's my department of water. You know, all of you need to be recognized for what you do here, and that's weird, because that's why people like this place to live and work. Thank you very much. Yeah, come on, I'll even take a shirt.
Okay, right here. I'm going to cut Kenny's head off.
Thank you so much.
One more. Thank you, guys. All right, we'll get back into our agenda. Resolution 30. Did I really? Sorry, thank you. Requesting council's permission for the mayor's holiday for 2026. Mayor's request came into my office for January 2nd. I just wanted to get in front of the council and see if you'd approve.
Thanks to me. A second. Don't make that motion.
Been a motion a second, approve the mayor's holiday for January 2nd, 2026. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. A little flustered there in all the award giving. Finally, resolution 30-2025 is adopting the housing action plan into our comprehensive plan. Are there any questions or comments about that? Don't know if she sent you a copy of the resolution from 2023, but.
Make a motion to approve resolution 30-2025.
I'll second. Been a motion a second to adopt our housing action plan into our comprehensive plan under resolution 30-2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Next is a transfer of. All right. Thank you, council. Next is a transfer of funds, resolution 34-2025.
I had a couple requests come in, and there was one last minute today, so there is an update to what was sent out. So a total within the Building Department for $400, a total within Public Works and Safety for $5,770, and a total within the Fire Department for $4,495. General fund total $10,665. A total within CCI of $30,000, and a total within CCD of $84,000.
Any questions, comments, council?
I'll make the motion second.
Been a motion a second to approve the transfer of funds as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, council. Next is ordinance 21-2025, the 2026 budget. Shelby?
Thank you. I will go ahead and read these one more time. This is the second reading of the budget. We had the public hearing last meeting. Casino and Riverboat, $35,000. General Fund, $4,297,104. Debt Payment Fund, $111,163. Local Income Tax, or PS Lip Fund, $854,113,000. Our Local Road and Street Fund, $59,485. Our Motor Vehicle Highway, which is our restricted and unrestricted funds combined, $612,875. Our Law Enforcement Continuing Ed Fund, $10,000. Our Cumulative Capital Improvement Fund, $26,000. Our Cumulative Capital Development Fund, $251,146. Our Economic Development Income Tax, $311,000. And our Redevelopment General Fund, $9,500. For a total adopted budget approved tonight of $6,577,386.
Questions, comments?
Thank you for your work on that, Shelby. Appreciate that very much. Make a motion to approve the ordinance 21-2025, our 2026 budget.
Second.
Been a motion a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor approving the 2026 budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Again, thank you for your work on that. Next is ordinance 23-2025, 2026 salary ordinance.
This is the second reading of ordinance 23, which is the salary ordinance for 2026. This was sent out to superintendents, make sure everything looked okay in all their departments. Haven't heard a whole lot back. I think it's what we talked about for the meeting.
This is our second reading.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 23-2025.
Second.
Been a motion a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, council. Next is approval of the credit card statement and allowing the mayor to sign that.
I'll make a motion to allow the mayor to pay me. Sorry, sign the credit card.
It's already.
All right. Been a motion a second to approve the credit card statement. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Next is our Led Service Line Contingency Project Bid Award. Bryce, do you want to do it, or you want to have Ryan address this?
I didn't know Ryan was coming this evening, so I will let him think.
It is very nice to see Ryan.
Thank you. So with the bids that were open for this project at last Port of Works meeting, the low bidder was Atlas Excavating with a bid of $697,000 even. We reviewed their bid package. No omissions or errors. All the math checked out. And I know also Attorney Sammons did review the bid package, took no exceptions to it. So yeah, it is our recommendation to award it to Atlas Excavating, the low bidder, with the only tweak being that it would be for the contingency funds available of $435,000.
All right. So we have $435,000 left?
Yes.
And we'll get as many Led Service Funds as we can?
Correct. Well, I can't tell you exactly the number, but it would be scaled down. The original project had, oh, let's see, 50, it had 60 in the project. So that was for the full package that they bid. So if you pro-rated that down, it would probably be around 45 services that it would include.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, may need a motion to award the bid to Atlas Excavating, is it right?
Yes.
Motion a second to award the Led Service Money Contingency Project bid to Atlas Excavating for approximately $435,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstain. What abstention? All right. Seven Street Paving Bid Award?
Yes, same deal bids were opened at the last Board of Works meeting. We received two bids, the low bidder being Town and Country of $86,595. That was well below our engineer's estimate. So we know they've worked here in the city before and that they're highly recommended. So and I also know what Attorney Sammons looked at their bid package again, took no exception to it. So again, our recommendation would be to award for that full amount of $86,595 to Town and Country.
Make a motion to award the contract to Town and Country?
Second.
Been a motion a second to award the Seven Street Paving Bid to Town and Country Paving for $86,595. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, council. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. Good to see you again. Next is our Fuel Bid Opening with Josh Eldridge. No, I don't remember where I put that.
Yep, we got two and.
Our first bid is from Keystone Cooperative, 1466 North McKinley Avenue, for item number one, unleaded gasoline. All right, I'm going to give you the unit price, and then I'll forward it to you guys to decide what you do afterwards. For item number one, quantity of 500 gallons, twice weekly delivered, the unit price of $2,000, $2, I'm sorry, $2,009.0 cents from the unit price. $2.21 cents. So it looks like we only have one bid.
The unit size, I assume, is one gallon?
Yeah, I assume so too. But the way they wrote it, they were quantity 500. So we'll forward that to you, your committee to look at. Sound good? Next, next bid is from Town and, oh, Keystone Cooperative, again, 1466 North McKinley Avenue. It is for diesel fuel. Again, quantity 500, it says again, but it looks like the gallon price is at 2.6870 per gallon. And then they have a premium diesel, Diesel X, base price of 2.7320. And we'll forward both of these to you, Josh. If you want to come get them after we're done in the meeting. I'd be guys take a look. Those are the only two bids we got, though.
Well, you know, it's, with the time I've been here, there was like three companies, and they just dwindled down to Sears, which is Keystone now. They're the only ones doing the bidding in the area.
I think last year we had a couple of bids.
We had a lot of interest.
But we didn't have a lot of bids.
We'll forward those off to Josh and then come back to our next council meeting with the recommendation. All right? All right. Next is the Claims Approval, Council.
Aye. I'll second.
Been a motion a second to approve the claims that were presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. I don't have any unfinished business, council, unless you do, or committee reports. All right. I do have a couple of things of administrative comments. The Christmas party is designed for employees on December 19th from 1:00 to 4:00. Love to have council present. We'd also like to ask money from the Public Relations Fund for up to $1,500 to provide the food for the.
Fire station.
Yes, sir.
Any motion on that?
Yeah, I think so.
Second. What time does it start?
1:00 to 4:00. Sounds like you made the motion.
Yes, I did.
Been a motion a second to provide the funding from the Public Relations Account for the Christmas party on December 19th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you, council. Next, I talked to council president, Wiser, about what you want to do with the Seven Street tap requirements. In the past, when we've annexed areas, we were nice enough to give people a break to do that, but I'll let you address it from now on, from that point.
Well, my thought on that was when we are going and annexing people in, we give them a certain time period to get hooked up, and we waive that tap fee if they do it within that time period. This is an existing property within the city limits. Vacant lots hopefully built for development. It is a cost of doing, of building a property and selling a property. It is already within our city limits. I think we should keep the tap fees when those lots sell and somebody builds on them. If there's other vacant lots in the city right now, that builder would have to, or that individual would have to tap in. So I feel like we should keep the tap fees for the Seven Street.
How much is a tap fee?
$2,000, I believe.
Yeah, $2,000.
So you want to put that in the form of a motion? Or do we need it?
I mean, that's what our rules are now, right?
Yeah.
So when it's a lot that's being sold and somebody has to tap in, we're, I don't, I don't know.
I think we just need a motion if we were going to go different.
Can we talk about discussing that with redevelopment since they were?
When, I think in the redevelopment meeting, they wanted to leave it up to City Council to make that decision. So that's why I brought it up to you guys at this point. They didn't think that they, that was for their jurisdiction design.
I would say I'm kind of on the opposite end of the spectrum. I would like to encourage growth and see those lots get developed and sort of the incentive that we could do. I would be more favorable waiting.
But it is about developing. I just.
It is about developing, but we are making, we are making the improvements with utilities to that area so that it can be developed because it wasn't. We're also putting in street to encourage that as well. So I, I mean, if it's another, I just feel like it's only fair if there's another vacant lot in town. It's, I mean, it's already within our city limits. We are helping it so that it can be developed, but I feel like it should. That's my opinion.
The one thing I'm looking at, though, we're putting that, if it was just a lot, I don't have a problem. But we, you said we're adding a street too. I mean, so what we're trying to do, we're trying to bring people into that area because we annexed it in. And if it was just one lot, I could go with that, but we're trying to bring a host of.
Right. It's not, it's not being annexed in. It's already within the city limits. But I know what you're saying. But I don't know. That's just my thought. We are putting expense into it. Yes, we do want to encourage development, but we are making that available and ready so that it can be developed.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Bryce, are we tapping the sewer as we lay it and putting runs into each lot? And the same with the water line?
As we at the property lines when we wrap up down there.
So you're not redigging up the street and literally tapping it as you would if it were a single house in the middle of the city?
I think that kind of reinforces what Ernest and I are saying, that we're already doing it. We're going to do it whether somebody.
Advised or not.
Advised or not, we're, I would say we're also kind of saving time and money by doing it in this way.
I can see both points too. I think what's probably best at this point is to table it for now, and then we'll put it on the agenda. And maybe some of the public would like to come and have some info on it. And then that way, we can make a little better decision on how we want to go from that point. It's up to you, council, if you'd like to do it that way. But to me, I can see both points. Obviously, we want to encourage the growth, but this is, these lots have already been existing there. We're not annexing somebody in. So I see both sides of that.
Well, I think too, that the developer or builder understands that those fees are part of, part of development.
And it's not like our sewer and water utilities couldn't use the tap fees also. That's the other part I'm looking at. But let's move it back and put it on the agenda for our next meeting, I think 13th November. Is that right? All right. Thank you, council. That was very well discussed. All right. Administrative comments, Shelby?
I will just reiterate what I said last meeting. Thank you all for the time keeping at, keeping up with it, keeping your employees clocking in and out. It has been great. Again, if you have any questions, concerns, we can reach out.
He's definitely picked up and.
Well, I mean, they're using it, or else they don't have any time.
How many payrolls have you been through with it?
We've been through two. Yeah, it's been great.
I would much like to have that in the previous position I have at the city. Eighteen time cards on Monday morning. So it helps with the map tremendously. Anything else? Mr. Watson, anything from you?
I have nothing.
All right. Hello?
Did you want to discuss the July 4th thing or save that for another meeting?
No, I think that's, the sooner we get some of the stuff moving, the better off I think we're going to be. So go ahead.
Well, Mayor and I were discussing today also, it will be the 250th celebration of our country this next July 4th, and talking about what could we do as a city possibly for that celebration. So just be thinking about something that we, I know we don't, the city itself doesn't normally have something. But we were talking about different ideas. I know there's a local church in town that does fireworks every year. I don't, and they draw a pretty good crowd into the park. So for that, I told him, I don't know if we could do some sort of celebration during the day at Brookside Park, maybe do a golf cart parade, now that we have a golf court, cart ordinance, or have food trucks there, or line up something for the day, or later in the day, and that could tie into the fireworks.
Also collaborate with other organizations and maybe the county and the chamber and those kinds of. chamber and those kinds of?
Somebody has a meeting tomorrow with Jasper County Economic Development and I've encouraged her to ask what's going to go on there. So yeah, we want to celebrate that and I know I've already talked with both Chief Anderson and Chief Hahn about it'll also be the 25th year of 9/11 on Friday at Little Peasant Jasper. So I'm sure those two have already got their heads together and have a huge plan already. So, but thank you.
Yeah, so just be thinking of ideas, something that we should.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it for me.
All right. Kevin?
I have nothing. I have anything else.
Wow, all right. Hearing that, we have the superintendent's reports. Chief Anderson, you want to start us off?
Something just popped in my head. I really have nothing for counsel, but Friday being Halloween, we will have our regular duty units out and then I've always, and as well as you and your chief, encourage anybody that has, officers that have young kids to trick or treat, encourage them to take their squad cars out just to be more visible. Hopefully the bombers will be playing that night here in town, so if that's the case, I'll just stay on duty and then go out to the game right afterwards. So we should have more, more officers than usual on the streets for the trick or treat time.
Think they can go to Freeman?
Yeah. I'm thinking a week ahead. I'm thinking a week ahead, so never mind. Most Harley can pull some strings and get it in the back.
That'd be real nice.
Real nice.
That's a long trip there. Last time was Mary Cole. Anything else, sir?
That's all I have, thank you.
How's smart?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm looking this evening.
Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really, the only business that I have to report is that I've received, I think, 13 applications now to replace crystals, so I'll be moving forward with those interviews, hopefully next week. Apart from that, I don't really have anything to report.
Any questions for Jacob?
Well, I take that back. I do have one thing, I wasn't sure if you had seen your email, Mr. Mayor, but Mr. Otten has sent us the purchasing agreements for the lots at 470 North Colony. So redevelopment meets this Monday, so we'll be moving on that pretty soon. That's all.
Just by circumstance, we were odd circumstances, we also rented an excavator for other jobs, Hopefully we'll move quickly on that. All right, Chief Hahn, you have anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, we tested 1,100 feet of hose, all but 50 foot of that passed, so that's good news. They also did pump testing last week. All the trucks passed except for the city truck, just got a stuck relief valve, so I've authorized the repair shop to come and look at it and they'll be here Wednesday to hopefully fix it or tell me what I got to do next. Last thing I have is, I talked to Shelby last week, I believe it was, we have purchased some, two more containers for our training site and upon delivery, they would like to have a check. So I'm asking counsel to give Shelby permission to go ahead and write that check upon delivery this week.
How much is that for? How much?
$3,500 at our last vote. Yeah.
What do the containers use for?
What do the containers use for? Flashover chambers, fire department training, flashover.
I'll make a motion.
Been a motion of second for allowing the clerk chair to cut a check for the delivery of two containers for the flashover chamber, fire department's flashover chamber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you counsel, anybody vote against, should ask, and no extensions. Good. Anything else, Chief?
That's all, Mayor.
All right. Heath, what's going on?
How much? I don't have anything this evening.
Bryce, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few project updates. Courthouse sidewalk is moving along. They're expecting, as weather provides, to have the concrete board this week and they're asking to coordinate to set the light poles beginning next week. Seventh Street Project, the sewer is done completely. We still have three water surfaces to put in once we get the storm main in and we began the storm main this morning. Hopefully by the end of the week, we'll be done, if not very close to being done, and get them services knocked out and all of our utility work will be finished over there. I-65 Project, the Boring Jack has began, begun under the interstate. They are working on the water main first and the directional drilling is also started on the west side of the interstate, specifically on Biggs's Drive as of right now. And then the Division C or Division Three visual sewer mobilized in on Thursday of last week. They are cleaning and televising the Melville Sewer in preparation for the lining to take place.
About 10 months too late is all.
Yes, sir.
Good to, any questions for Bryce?
Question on the street light, do they go matching what's downtown now?
That's correct.
Around there. I bet people ask.
No comment, Heath?
I don't have an answer for the east side of the street yet.
Okay, I'm just sure we ordered that side of the street too, but just double check.
Yeah, I did not make it down there this afternoon.
Josh, you're up next.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The only update I have is the application for community crossings has been submitted. Hopefully we'll hear something soon.
Good deal. Good deal. Any question for Josh? Todd Wilson, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Leak survey is done, there was nothing major found. I'll get the full report, but it's all distance leaks on the intercepts. It was something we deal with every day. Once a pool comes in, the guys will go out and fix them and then we just cancel them. So that's good. And then we've got approximately 4,500 foot of pipe in done on the east side of 65 and then USDI is not here this week, then it'll be back on Monday and we'll start on Biggs's Drive and then Boring West to get the rest of the line in. So we're done on the east. And then that's all I got.
Any questions?
Yeah, how's that in the Boring machine?
It's a learning process, but they, Jason's getting very familiar with it, so it's getting a lot easier now.
Okay, what about the press?
We, each guy right now is taking turns running the head part of it and then once he gets completely familiar with running the machine part, then we will each take a turn on getting to learn that part of it. But we're going to let him get completely comfortable, so he shows us what we can do, but the rest of us can still run the head. So and then that's just rotation is all that is. And then once we do that, and then if other departments want it, to get comfortable with it, then they can come down and we can start training them too.
Nice.
Good.
All right, any questions for Todd? Heather, all you next?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of events this week taking place in the parks. We'll have a globe disc tournament on Thursday, October 30th, on Titan Course at Brookside Park. We have Boo Bash planned this Friday, October 31st, at Philson Park. We'll have trick or treating, pumpkin carving, and then we'll be showing the movie Beetlejuice. I want to say that I appreciate the passing of the Salary Ordinance, that's really going to allow me to do some streamlining, streamlining of positions in the Parks Department that needs to happen, so thank you for that, I appreciate it very much. Along with lengths of things that I appreciate, I am grateful for the partnership with the Street Department helping to demolish the old shop at Yercoy Park. We've discovered a beautiful park behind that building, so I can't wait for the public to see that. I think it's a space they don't even realize is there and available for them to utilize. I had talked with you last meeting about the Civic Rec software. I have my first onboarding meeting with that group next week. The concession stand for the South End of Brookside Park should be delivered very soon and I'll be meeting tomorrow with personnel from Purdue Extension to talk about a collaboration for a community garden. That's what's going on in parks.
So we do have a golf cart parade through Brookside, we could sell concessions.
We could.
That's the one I was like, I'm like. It doesn't sound like that.
I like the golf cart.
All right, any questions for Heather?
Do you have a location for the?
I'm thinking Brookside, or Yercoy Park rather. Yeah, we'll see.
Will you partner with other entities on that?
Could we, or are we going to? Yes, I'm going to be reaching out to the master gardeners as well.
Stacey, anything?
No, thank you.
Harley, anything? All right, do you have any questions?
Not for this meeting.
All right. Hearing none.
Hearing none. I've made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been a motion of second to adjourn, all those in favor signify.